I'd like to call this meeting of the Bay County Commission Committee of the Whole to order. It's Tuesday, October 7th, 2025. It's 4:00 p.m. Lindsey, could you take a roll, please?
Crete.
Here.
Nemec, here. Begic.
Here.
Beeson.
Here.
Rupp.
Here.
Docket.
Here.
Banajak.
Here.
Coram, present.
Okay. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Are there any changes to the agenda? Okay, entertain a motion to approve of the agenda.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And in a motion for the approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Support.
Support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, it's time for public input. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the commission? Public input going once, going twice, public input is closed. Petitions and communications. We don't have anyone here for recognizing October 2025 as Family Court Awareness Month in Bay County, so I entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Operation Green Light, I would entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bay County Executive Propose 2026 Budget Overview Presentation.
Mr. McHale?
Yep.
I'll make some comments first. Yeah, I want to thank Scott and Kim, who will be presenting today the budget for 2026. And I just wanted to extend my sincere thanks to all the department heads for their outstanding collaboration and commitment throughout the budget process. Your efforts in adhering, and we have several here, to the timeline, submitting all budget requests on time, providing detailed thoughtful justifications are truly appreciated. Your thorough review and updates to the fee schedule, for example, and the very modest fee increases in keeping with what we're seeing across the front with the private sector as well as the public sector, very modest increases in fees to keep everything that we've got going, whether it's the ice or, you know, the Civic Arena or the Bay County Golf Course or the Pinconic Park, they're very well received and appreciated. I want to say that our department has thoughtful review and updates, along with your proactive approach in identifying new opportunities to drive revenue and reduce costs, have been instrumental in strengthening our financial planning. I also want to express my gratitude to the Board of Commissioners for their active participation in the budget process, particularly during the budget hearings. Your engagement and guidance have been invaluable in shaping a fiscally responsible and forward-looking budget. Additionally, a heartfelt thank you goes out to all of our Bay County employees. Your hard work and dedication to the citizens of Bay County do not go unnoticed, and you consistently strive to be fiscally responsible while making our community a great place to work, live, and play. Your commitment to public service is the foundation of our success, so I want to thank all of our county staff, our commission, and of course, our department heads for the good work that they do year in and year out, and also especially to Kim and Scott for preparing the 2026 budget, which they're going to outline the features of here momentarily.
Thank you, Jim, and thank you for the time you put into the budget this year, and especially Kim for putting all this together. If it wasn't for you, we wouldn't have a lot of this information in front of us today. And also Noreen for putting this slideshow together. So I have a wonderful staff, and they make my life very easy, so I'm lucky. So today, what we'll do is we'll have a brief introduction, we'll go through the revenues, we'll go through our expenses, and some recommendations. So what is the mission of our budget? This budget strives to balance the needs of the citizens of Bay County, as Jim mentioned, and its employees while ensuring fiscal and responsibility and excellent service to the Bay County community. So it's all about Bay County. So I'll talk a little bit about the budget process, and I know it's a little bit smaller, so I'll do my best here to explain everything. So the budget started in June. In June of 2025, the Bay County Department, the Bay County Departments and the certain component units received their 2026 budget proposals package from the Budget Department. And the Budget Department then develops and maintains the 2026 personal costs throughout the budget process, so we work on those starting in June, and actually, we're still working on it today a little bit. And then in July, the third week of July, the Departments and Component Units submit completed proposed 2026 budget outlines. These component units who don't have access to the Bay County financial software turn those paper copies into the, or in their proposed request into the Budget Department. The Bay County held the budget hearing meetings with Department Directors, which I do thank our Commissioners and Jim for being a part of. We started those in July, and we wrapped those up in the first week of August. So in August and September, the Budget Department, the Finance Officer, and the County Executive, we worked together with the Department and Component Units on their 2026 budget. The County Executive also meets with individual Department Heads regarding the 2026 proposed budgets. September's newspaper published the notice of our October meeting where we are today to discuss this 2026 Bay County budget. So October 1st, the County Executive submits his 2026 proposed Bay County budget to the Board of Commissioners to receive. Budget copies are available within the Board Office for the Commissioners to study and review. The Board of Commissioners review the proposed 2026 executive budget, and they start working on their 2026 budget at that point in time. October 7th, which is today, we are presenting the Executive Proposed Budget. And then through October into December, the Bay County Commissioners will work on the 2026 Bay County budget, then meet with the Budget and Department and Finance Officers several times to complete the 2026 Bay County budget, which we actually already started yesterday. So tentative adoption of the 2026 budget by the Bay County Board of Commissioners is held at the full Board meeting in November or December, whenever we have a completed budget. All right, into the numbers. All right, so total county spending for all funds first, in 2026, the budget is $173 million. In 2025, the budget was $175 million, so that's a decrease of $2 million. So what does that mean? The county plans to spend slightly less overall in 2026 than it did in 2025. Moving on, though, to the general fund. This is really what we control here at the county. So here, the 2026 budget is $50.5 million. In 2025, it was $47.3 million. So that is an increase of 3.2 million. So what that means? The county's main operating fund is increasing spending by about 6.8%. So you ask, why does that happening? Well, we had raises for employees, which we thank you for, due to contractual payment agreements that we've negotiated all summer long, higher legal costs for court-appointed attorneys, more spending on technology, repairs and maintenance, and investment in capital projects, some example, building and equipment. So moving on. The general fund budget revenue, you can see that 43% is made up of taxes, at roughly over $21 million. So a lot of our revenue, almost all of it comes from county taxes. So the general fund budget revenue is, again, the planned or forecasted income that will go into the general fund to support the day-to-day operations of our government. Any questions on those line items? Yes.
So with the $2 million reduction in the overall budget, what is the reason for that? Is that ARFA dollars?
It's ARFA.
Okay.
American recipe.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
So looking at property taxes, you can see since 2014 that they have continued to go up, and again, that's where that $21.4 million comes from, generated from property taxes, our main revenue source. So let's look at expenses. So the general fund, again, budget expenses that are planned or forecasted expenses that will go into the general fund to support the day-to-day operations of the government. So this is what it costs to run the government, and you can see that wages and benefits are 62% of what we budget for, and that's over $20 million. So the Bay County General Fund is at $50 million. This, again, is up from $47.3 million in the fiscal year 2025, and that's the same increase as we've seen in revenue of 3.2 million. So some key driving these increases, contractual pay increases for county employees, the indigenous attorney fees, which are the court-appointed legal defense, hardware and software maintenance, and then the capital outlay projects, which is infrastructure, equipment, et cetera. And you can see the different line items there, too. So the general fund, the 2026 general fund budget expenditures by function, so this is also discussing, you know, what the general fund covers. And when we talk about that, the general fund supports the core services of the county, which includes public safety, our sheriff and jail, the courts and legal services, administration and finance, elections, facilities and maintenance, and the health and human Our highest is, again, the general government, followed by the public safety and judicial. That makes up the majority of it, of our expenses. Talk a little bit about health insurance. As we know, costs are going up with insurance. Employers' health insurance contributions are projected to be $5.2 million for 2026. The budget for 2025 was estimated at 5.9. We do see that number getting closer to what it was in 2024. Right now, it's at 5.2, but when we, as exacts are starting to come in, it'll probably be closer to that, 2024. Then let's talk a little bit about the general fund. When we talk about the funded ratio for retirement, the general group as of December 31st, 2023, has seen as a funded ratio of 132%. That is the same in 2024. We just got that today, so thank you, Tiffany, for that. And then we will talk about the sheriff's group. It was funded at 134% in 2023, and is also in 2024 funded at 134%. But one thing I do want to remind you, when we approved the proactive and reactive ratios for retirement, we're projecting 128% still to be funded for the general group and 130% for the sheriff's group. So still very well funded, and you can see the historical funding percentages since 2010 will still be around that 130% for both groups. So very healthy, very strong, and most counties are jealous of our, you know, pension ratios that we have. So when we look at the 2026 capital, major capital expenditures, the information systems, so our IT, computer software, audiovisual, that's at $284,000. Buildings, grounds, parks, wrecks, courts, $229,000. And as Krista reminded me, you know, this was the same number last year, because that's our starting point as we continue to build on that and decide on, you know, what we are going to put into our budget for 2026. Secondary road patrol, $256,000. That's the purchase of four new vehicles and equipment. And then the Sheriff's Department, $493,000. I do want to note that the safe boat for Marine Patrol is, has a $351,000 grant that will be paid, so that actually will be coming down much more. Okay. So when we look, sorry, I don't know what's going on, just here, going forward, the 2021 through 2026 general fund budget comparison. So yes, our expenses are going up. You know, they were $47 million last year, $45 million the year before, and $44 before that. At the same time, our revenues are going up. So if you look at the surplus deficit, yes, you know, the general fund is in 2026, you know, producing $4.1 million towards that, but go back to 2024, and that was actually higher, and then at the end of the year, there was actually a surplus. So it is scary. I mean, there's some big numbers here that we're looking at, but at the same time, with our fiscal responsibility here of our departments, we've been able to, you know, ride that ship. Some things to also consider is, you know, we budget for certain projects, and if we don't do the project, well, that goes into this budget, so that inflates the numbers. There's GASP standards that we have to account for, so we have to make sure that we're looking, before, we could just account for an asset and say, it costs this much, we would throw it on the sheet for that year, and we were good to go. Now, anything over $10,000, we got to amortize, and so we're breaking that doubt for future years for the length of that asset will be worth, have value to the county. So that also causes some of the issues. I mean, you could have revenues that come in higher than we expect, we could get grants for things that we didn't expect, so there's a lot of different ways that at the end of the year, we have that surplus, and, you know, I hope that we do again, but with wages going up, it's still uncertain. So you look at the budget stabilization and the general budget. So again, when we have the budget stabilization, you know, we talk about that, it's at $7.3 million, which is the same level it's been in the year 2023, and we are at 17.25% of the average of the county's five most recent general fund budgets, $42,500. So brown is the signed and unassigned fund balance, which is at $15.5 million, and then the total assigned, unassigned, and budget stabilization fund balance is $22.8 million. So we talked about budget stabilization a little bit. You know, we had the, you know, unassigned funds, which are available for any purpose, which are more flexible. We had assigned and committed, which are set aside for specific use, examples are capital projects and emergencies, and then we have the restricted, which, you know, are legally limited to specific uses. So when you talk about the budget stabilization, rainy day funds, they're a separate reserve fund, set aside for the county to stabilize its budget during economic downturns or revenue shortfalls. It's used to avoid cuts to essential services during tough times, and it often offsets unexpected drops in revenue, such, you know, like a recession, if we run into that. And it maintains our credit ratings, which is very important for bonds, and it shows that, most importantly, that we're fiscally responsible. So in 2024, the annual review adjustment to the general fund's committed fund balance for the budget stabilization arrangement, it was requested and approved on September 17th, 2024, by the Bay County Board of Commissioners to amend Bay County's ordinance number 28 to, from 20% our maximum down to 15. Last year, as I just mentioned, we finished at 17.25. So Bay County treated this overpayment as a prepayment for future, so if we ever were under, we could use that prepayment first, and that will save us from having to tap into the budget stabilization. So again, very fiscally responsible here. So lastly, budget recommendations. At this point in time, we recommend using approximately $4.1 million of unassigned fund balances to balance the general fund for the budget of 2026. The primary reason for why use 2026 use of fund balance is large, because general funds, other services, and charges increased over $1.5 million over the 2025 budget. Wages increased 1.3 over 2025. Now, I understand that we said that's not as much as that they would be when we presented about, you know, the wage increase. This is all positions filled, okay? So it's a little bit higher than we anticipated, but that would be if every Bay County position was filled, and historically, that does not happen. In capital outlay projects, not including grant reimbursement, capital outlay increased 0.9 million over 2025 budget. So our process right now is to continue to research additional funding revenue sources and grants to cover budgeted expenditures, continue to prioritize capital outlay projects and other services and charges to reduce the level of 2026 projects based on need. Capital is budgeted at one point, just shy of 1.3 million countywide, and additional decisions and adjustments will have to be made for the proposed 2026 budget to ensure fiscal responsibility while still maintaining excellent community service. So thank you for your time today.
Anyone have any questions for Scott?
Yes. Thank you. Taking a couple slides back to the switch from a 20% fund balance to 15%, I wasn't here, and obviously, you weren't here either, but does anyone know the rationale on dropping that down at a time?
Yeah, you know, they didn't actually consult with me about increasing it to 20%, and it's not necessary, so it doesn't make any sense to retain that much in a stabilization fund when it's so difficult to access.
How, how long was it at 20%?
It happened just as I was coming in in December.
Four, five years.
Oh, five years.
Four years.
And it's 15 before?
Yes, it's always been 15.
That's what the state law says supposed to be. We had to get permission from the state pressure, the county did, to increase it to 20.
Yeah, well, we have the second, the second thought, too, so, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to go, point out when I go to the MAC meetings, and I point out how much, you know, how much our retirement is, they all say, oh, that's nice, that's pretty good, compared to what they have.
Exactly.
Yeah, and I'll, we're in a good position for.
Very good.
Funds, yeah.
I have one question. The 4% contribution for the retirement, that's the required amount?
Yes.
He's contractual. Yes, he's in the contract.
Anybody else have any questions? I would entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Support.
The move and supported. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion now for public, to go out of regular order of business to conduct a public hearing on the proposed 2026 Bay County budget.
I'll make the motion.
Support.
The move is supported. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we go into public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that would like to ask any questions or? We got in the budget? Seeing none? I would entertain a motion to go back into regular order of business.
So moved.
Support.
The move is supported. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, Bay County Executive designation of Bay County Office of Soil Erosion and Sediment Control as the county enforcing agency and reclassification of civil engineer position. I entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
Support.
Should I move and support? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, Bay County Road Commission, Michigan Transportation Fund Bonds, Series 2025. I entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
Support.
The move is supported. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, number one, Road Patrol Township Contracts, FTY 2026. I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Do I hear support? Yep. Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item two, Court Officer Liaison Deputy Position. I entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Support.
Any discussion? I would ask Judge Sharon if you could elaborate a little bit on the need for the position.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Crete. Good afternoon. It's a pleasure to be here and see you all today. I appreciate your attention to the budget matters, too. We've had for decades, really, a good working relationship between the courts and county commissioners and the county executive. Doesn't happen that way in every county, and we're proud of our relationship, and we appreciate your looking after us the way you do. We're all committed to providing a top level of service that we can to our community, and glad that we can accomplish that together. If I could take one second to also thank you for the action you've taken with regard to the wage increases that have been negotiated. It's going to go a great way to help us pay our people what they're worth. We have got a lot of tremendous employees. It'll also help us to be able to continue to attract and retain employees. We need to do the important work, and so you've really stepped up there, and I appreciate it very much. This item on the sheriff's agenda here is about our security. We've been in the, I'm so old, I've been around, kicking around here so long, I started in 1979 at the county, and tried my first case in this room, but I still call it the new building, but we've been over there 27 years now, I think, and security hasn't changed at all since we've been there, and the staff that we've had over the years has done a really remarkable job, but our fears have increased, times being what they are, and we have two security people at the front of the building who monitor traffic into the building. They're kind of stuck in place there to, they can't move from that location, so they can keep track of the people coming into the building and screening them. And we have two other deputies that function primarily, bringing people from the jail. One services primarily the district court, the other primarily the circuit court. They bring prisoners back and forth and are present some of the time when we have criminal matters pending, and they're otherwise in the building at some times and not in the other. And we have had some incidents, nothing of life-threatening proportions, but employees are concerned, the judges are concerned, and the sheriff is concerned about our continued safety. We've been in some discussions, I think, over here now, with County Executive Barsha, Chairman Banashak, and Commissioner Begic, we're all involved, and we had a plan to add two positions, but in light of the sheriff's contract with the federal authorities to house new federal prisoners, he's looking also to take on a role of transporting prisoners, and some funds are available, weren't available before to the county, but the sheriff has come up with something a little more innovative, and that has come up with something a little more innovative, and that would be to add this one position, that it's really, it functions as a court jail liaison and additional security for our facility, which hasn't really changed since we moved over there. And then there's the likelihood that we could do it cheaper than we were talking about before by using some of these part-time transportation deputies that would be added, who could then do some random patrols and so forth through the building, giving us all a greater sense of security. So it's something that we've wished and hoped for, for a long time, and talked about for a considerable period of time, and I would ask for your support in doing this, and appreciate your consideration, and be happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Go ahead.
Just want to point out, just before I came in, and I can't remember where it was at, but there was a shooting, shooting in a courtroom, and I think it was the judge that was shot.
Yeah.
I can't remember where it was, but it was just in the news today, so.
Yeah.
It's happening.
There's no way we can be absolutely 100% safe in this world, but I think we owe it to everybody who works with us and the general public to do the best we can.
Yeah, I just want to thank you, Judge Sharon, for your appearance today and your comments. And I know this is a little less than what we discussed in terms of personnel and enhancing security in the court complex, but I think this will be safer than what it has been. And when I've been over there and talked to staff, it is apparent that, you know, you might think it's the people in the criminal court that might be capable of outbursts or emotional, you know, acting out, but apparently divorces are very contentious, and sometimes the litigants in divorces, and I know you've handled those in the past and do regularly, and it just seems like the temperature of the public is, is really up, and people are much more combative, you know, verbally. And so I think this is certainly, if it's not a complete answer, it's a step in the right direction.
I agree. Thank you for that. It's true, we often think of security just in terms of the criminal defendants that are brought over or come in off the streets, but a lot of people are in the building who don't want to be there. They've been sued for divorce, or sued by a neighbor, or otherwise sued, or it's a place where tensions run high often, and we appreciate your looking after us. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item three, addition of OWI reimbursement to the Bay County Sheriff's Office fee schedule. I entertain that motion.
So moved. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, Bay County Drain Commissioner, 2025 Assessment Roles. I entertain a motion.
So moved. Support.
The move is supported. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, Health Officer, Local Health Department, LHD and Medicaid Health Plan, MHP, Care Coordination Agreements for Case Management. I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item H, Personnel Director, Tuition Reimbursement for Jason McCoolen. I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Support.
The move is supported. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item I, Environmental Affairs and Community Development Department. Item one, Mosquito Control Budget Adjustment and Purchase of Replacement Truck.
Move to approve. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item J, Recreation Facilities Director. Item one, Health Department Conference Room as a polling location. I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Support.
The move is supported. Is there any discussion?
I have a question. So they're still going to have the early voting at the community center? I don't think Katie's here, but is question about early voting still going to be at the community center?
Early voting's at the community center for the August and November election.
Yeah. That's right. Those other ones are special, special elections.
Yep. We don't have to do, we don't have to provide early voting if it's not a statewide election. This isn't done. Yep.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item two, Labity Lounge Advertising and Lease Agreement. I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Support.
The move is supported. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, number one, Analysis of General Fund Equity 2025.
Move to receive.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item two, Update Regarding Executive Directive 2007-11.
Move to receive.
Support.
The move is supported. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item three, Purchasing Bid Award Notification RFQs 2025-3, CM and Design Professional for Bay County Pool Facility.
Move to approve. Support.
The move is supported. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four, Purchasing Bid Release for RFQs for the Assessment of Juvenile Home Financials. I entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve. Support.
The move is supported. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item L, Payables General.
Move to approve. Support.
The move is supported. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item M, Office of Assigned Counsel, August 2025 Report.
Move to receive.
Support.
The move is supported. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, Are There Any Referrals? Is there any unfinished business? Is there any new business? Corporate council, is there any need for a closed session today?
There is not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Is there any missed attendance? Are there any announcements?
Motion to adjourn. Support.
The move is supported. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everybody.